I'd like to call to order the Charter Township of Oxford Planning Commission regular meeting scheduled for Thursday, March 28, 2019. Would you please rise and pay your respects to the flag?
I would just see the flag, one of the United States of America, and two, three republics, which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. You note the roll?
Noted.
Move to item four, which is approval of the agenda.
I make a motion to approve the agenda presented.
Second.
I'll second.
They're moved by Mr. Humwick, seconded by Mr. Spiz. Any discussion on the motion? Seeing none, those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? The motion passes. Item five, approval of the minutes for February 28.
I move that we approve the February 28 minutes.
Support.
It's been moved by Mr. Nold, seconded by Mr. Berger. Any discussion on the motion? Seeing none, those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? The motion passes. Item six, public comments for items that are not scheduled for public hearing or on this agenda. If there's anyone out in the public wishing to speak, you can come up to the lectern, give your name, your address, and you've got three minutes to speak. I'm going to use the timer tonight. If that timer expires, I'm going to tap the gavel, and then you know that your time has expired.
Actually, I'm here to talk about the minutes you just approved. The ones you just approved, which basically, for the public hearing section, consists of just a list of names with a universal statement, which is not true. Forty-three percent of the Planning Commission members were absent from the public hearing. The meeting record does not enable those members who were absent to review the public hearing comments, and the record does not comply with the Michigan statutes. The court has held that procedures for zoning amendments have to be withheld and have to be adhered to strictly. There's more details in the write-up I gave you. I'm not going to go over that bit by bit, but I am going to tell you that MCL 125.3308 requires you to send a summary of the comments that were received at a public hearing to the township board. Those minutes do not do that. And it's real clear what you need to do. There's a reason for a public hearing. You're supposed to assemble the comments that the people made accurately and provide that to the township boards so that they understand what's going on. You have three commissioners here who weren't here at the last meeting. All you were provided was a list of names in that they were against the ordinance amendments as proposed. That's not what happened. I'm going to address Commissioner Spiz. Do you feel like, and I know you don't have to answer, but do you feel like you understood what happened for an hour's worth of public discussion from the minutes that you just approved? Is that something that you're going to present to the board in compliance with Michigan statute? We do expect you to follow the statute. We will hold you accountable if you don't. There's no valid reason for the Planning Commission not to create a clear and accurate record of a public meeting and clearly and accurately summarize what each individual member said. I'm going to give you some examples here. I just polled at random three communities' minutes from their last public hearing. I have Addison Township's minutes here, and you will look, this is 13 pages, and in the public hearing comment, they list everybody's name that spoke and a complete summary of what that person said. Some are even a page long with what one person said. I'm going through the list here. This is how they did it. They detailed what each person said so that people reading the minutes and the township board understands what was said. This one here is the Township of Orion. Much more extensive. Again, they list every person's name and what each individual person said for the public Rochester, 30 pages. Again, they list each person's name and what each person said. They're complying with the law. Why aren't we? You've also been presented previously with a list of the ordinance amendments that the citizens want. I'll talk more about that when that section comes up in particular. But in particular to that, we want to know why the Planning Commission hasn't consulted, you know, consulted with any of the residents in the zoning district. There's 29 landowners in the agricultural zoning district. It's not hard to communicate with them about what they want. The Planning Commission made statements before at the last public hearing that weren't quite true, and we'd like to know why you don't get the consultant reviews and the attorney reviews for these things. I think it would be helpful for you to have that, so we're all on the same page. We really would all like to work together on this. I'll speak more about it in the ordinance, you know, in the ordinance section about that, but, you know, we're all here for the best interest of this community. I'd like to work together on it. Thanks.
Thank you. Anyone else in the public wishing to speak?
Dr. Bruce Myers, 3100 Delano, Oxford, Michigan. And in regards to those minutes, I saw that my whole speech that I had handed in and wanted included came down to one word and just said "opposed," and that's not accurate. So, we need to do something about the minutes. Mr. Chair, it is your responsibility to adhere to the statutes, ordinance, and bylaws of the township and the state. It is your responsibility to make sure the actions of the Planning Commission stay within the aforementioned items. If you have difficulty staying legal, then you must make this right with the help of the supervisor. If the supervisor hinders your ability to perform your legal functions, then you must protect yourself and go to a higher authority. Hindering can be an improper direction, or a lack of tools or finances to properly fulfill your position. So hindering has a number of definitions in this case. I point this out because it appears, if only because of the minutes of the last public hearing being so inadequate, that no one can be expected to know what happened through the minutes. My document was not included. It didn't mention that I spoke, but it gave the wrong conclusion. This is not appropriate, and I want the minutes corrected to reflect my statements as well as all those of the other residents that came and presented testimony. Your position holds a public responsibility. Your position holds a public trust. Your position has a legal responsibility that must be met. If you fail to meet those responsibilities, you can and will be held responsible. It appears that you're trying to do the right thing, but you are failing to understand that you have the power and the duty to follow the law and the ordinance. It's up to you at this point. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else in the public?
Good evening. Jim Munus, Gardner Road, Oxford, Michigan. I've got one question for you folks. Have you seen our request or an application for text amendment? Has anybody read it? Came from our lawyer to the township? It's got in here what we're asking for in color. Any of you folks read this?
You're addressing the chairman, but yep, that's been reviewed.
Pardon?
That has been reviewed, yes.
So everyone here has looked at it?
Yes.
Okay, so the, what we're going to see tonight on the agenda is going to address some of this?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Anyone else out in the public wishing to speak?
Jenny Benson, 3270 Barber Road, Oxford. Just wanted to reiterate what Kelly had said, because I looked up the rules on what should be done with minutes, because I was concerned about it also after reading some of the minutes from some of these past meetings that we've had. The rules as printed, apparently MSU prints the state guidelines and what the township boards should do, there's rules and regulations for everybody, all types of functions. And the, what Kelly's talking about in the minutes is for the public hearings, not necessarily for every single meeting, but the meetings that are public hearings have to be printed out with what everybody says, because that's the only record that's allowed. If there was ever any kind of court case, you could never go back and use the video. It's not allowed in court. It has to be from the notes that are printed up. So that's, I think, one of the reasons that we're very concerned about people's testimony being put in print. But she made an excellent point, that, you know, when half the people don't show up on the board, how is the rest of the group going to know what was said? Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else out in the public wishing to speak?
Hi, Paul Warfield, 1220 East Davison Lake Road. I'm just going to ask a question to the chairman. Since you're the man in charge, that's all we're allowed to talk to is you, and I am addressing you, Mr. Young. Why, are you aware of the laws that Kelly referred to?
Yes.
Do you know your, do you believe you're following them, or you're not sure?
Yes.
You need to seek legal counsel. You believe you're following them?
Yes.
As far as minutes are concerned?
Yes.
Okay, on the record now.
Anyone else out in the public wishing to speak on a topic that has not been spoken on?
Mr. Chair, I'm going to hand this to you. This is important. Especially for the average.
Anyone else out in the public wishing to speak?
Okay, my name is Beverly Turner. I live with my husband at 2140 Delano Road, Oxford Township. We've owned our property for 30 years, and we've lived in our home there 16. We've also said and felt like we live in the best neighborhood in Oakland County. We've expressed that many times. We feel that way because we have great neighbors. We all make an effort to get to know one another. We have gatherings, we spend time together, we invite new neighbors to join us so that we can get to know them. And my suggestion is that people, and maybe the township board or this board, can promote that people be good neighbors, get to know one another. It takes effort, but it's worth it. I say all of this to say, I suggest, I can't speak to the people behind me, but I suggest that people north of us do really work at getting to know one another. Make an effort to get to know the Duns, their family and their children, even visit them to see what's going on there. It has been mentioned that the House of Providence is a million-dollar business. I have to ask the board, is this a proven fact? Horse farms with their barns, their tracks are businesses as well. Money is made in boarding and training horses, training riders, sponsoring shows, et cetera. It's a fact that they're in this to make money. Maybe they don't make a lot of money, but they make money. The real crux of my comments is, as a board, encourage our people to actually get to know one another. Welcome new neighbors into the neighborhood, not just out of what we hear, but actually visit people in your neighborhood. If someone new moves in, go see them. And the township can promote this idea. My understanding of the House of Providence, it's not a place just to house children. The Duns and their staff are trying to improve the lives of children, helping them to become productive citizens when they become adults. How can any one of us object to that when this is so much needed today in this great country, the United States, in which we live? Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else out in the public wishing to speak on a topic that's not atomic, a topic?
Yes.
That hasn't been brought up.
I wasn't planning to speak at all. My name's Kathy Warfield. I live at 1220 East Davison Lake Road, but I'm making a comment after your comment. I've been to Lansing. Have you been to Lansing to listen to any of the Duns?
Oh, no. I'm sorry, Pam, you can't really talk to her.
Okay, I've been to Lansing. I've listened to the Duns' statements they have given to the Michigan representatives, and they have stated, and they have been asked by the representatives, why didn't you go and get variances from the Oxford Township? We thought it would be easier to go through the back door, because we didn't want the people in Oxford Township to know what was going on. This is videotaped. We have sent you copies of this videotape down in Michigan, once back in December and once back in February. I've lived here, bought a house November of 2017. These are the people who have welcomed me to this community. It hasn't been the Duns. The Duns are doing nothing but saying we're troublemakers. I am worried about the lead on that property. I'm worried about the children. I'm a registered nurse, and this is dangerous, and this has to be stopped. Those children are, someday can come back and sue Oxford Township, the state of Michigan, or hot for the problems that they're going to have, lifelong effects of the lead. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else out in the public wishing to speak? Okay, seeing none, let's move to item number nine, unfinished business. Proposed amendments to zoning ordinance 67A regarding Article II, Section II definitions, Article III, Section V, schedule use regulations, AG Agriculture, Article Five, excuse me, Article Five, use regulations.
Mr. Chair, I don't want to interrupt, but you should have went to number seven next, if there were any commissioners coming in.
Oh, I'm terribly sorry. You're correct. Yeah, I'm very sorry about that. Okay, Commissioner comments, number seven. Let's go with Mr. Curtis.
I have nothing.
Colonel?
Yes. Talked to some of the residents in the community in the last month or so, and as well as today. They're excited about the ice off the lakes, the lake folks in the community will be able to use the lakes. Talked to Linda Lauren in regards to Pollyanna Trail. She ran her first 16.4 miles today in her, in her Gator. She's put out four trash bins, emptying trash bins and putting out baggies for the dogs. And other things I've heard at the restaurants is, there's a great discussion in regards to the empty 24. And there's, a lot of people don't know about it. So I would suggest to the people on TV, if they're watching, is to get involved with 24, get an idea of what's going to go on and what's coming down the pike. Thank you.
Mr. Berger?
I have no comments at this time.
Mr. Onwick?
I have no comment.
Stop. Mr. Spiz?
None tonight.
All right, I apologize. We'll move on now to public hearings, which there are none. Number nine, unfinished business. Pick up where we left off on that item. Can we get some pre-comment from the planner or from the ORC?
Well, we have had several meetings. We have looked at a lot of documents that have been presented from the public and from people with concerns. The original document that we produced back in January of this year is still the same. Regarding the amendments to the agricultural districts, the ORC has come to the conclusion, through legal advice and from our planning and zoning administrator, that the ordinance as it is presented is appropriate to make a recommendation to the township board for their approval, and I would like to see us move on with that if we could.
Okay. Lauren, anything to add?
No, the, what you have in front of you is the same that you had on the 28th of
Any other comments from the commissioners?
More general or basic question. I noticed on page three of the amended version, it starts at 5.35 aircraft landing strip, but I didn't see a 5.34 anywhere. Did I miss it? If you go back to the current ordinance, I don't see a 5.34 in there. Or am I missing something else?
I can look it up really quick. I believe that 5.34 was the new solar.
Okay.
Which was just updated, just updated the end of January, so maybe triple check. Yeah, 5.34 is the solar energy systems.
Great, thank you.
So this will be the next in the order.
Anything else? No other comments?
Okay. Based on the draft zoning ordinance, text amendments as heard at the February 28, 2019 Planning Commission meeting, and reflected in the minutes of this meeting, the planner's memo dated February 19, 2019, and the attorney's memo dated 12/26/2018, I move that the Planning Commission recommend to the township board approval of the following zoning ordinance text amendments as presented concerning the agricultural district schedule of uses, Section 2.2 definitions, Section 3.5 schedule of use regulations, ag agricultural, and Article Five use regulations. End of motion.
Mr. Chair, are you going to follow your ordinance?
I'll second that. Okay, it's been moved by Mr. Curtis, seconded by Mr. Nold. Don't worry, he didn't have a comment to the hearing. Public hearings? We concluded it right here. Moving on from here.
Your bylaws have a procedure in them, 3.4.
I think you should have. Okay, good. To clear your frustration or understanding, we had a public hearing last meeting, so we are, went through items one through five of that public hearing. The next was to go through any review of correspondence and commissioner discussions, picking up from there. However, has been pointed out to me that it's under unfinished or new business, so yes, we will take public comments.
May I be recognized?
So, we rescind that motion for the time being?
No. The motion can stay.
The bylaws say the motion comes after public discussion, right?
Right.
That's true. That's right.
You withdraw it this time, Mr. Curtis? Have public comment?
Sure.
Okay. All right, then let's have public comment on the unfinished business item. Kelly?
This is the kind of stuff we're really trying to avoid. You know, you have a procedure, we're just asking that you stick to it. The reason is, we don't feel like we're being heard, and we have this jump ahead and go ahead and do everything without listening. Again, there's 29 people in a district, and you're making an ordinance that affects everybody in that district, and the overwhelming majority of the people in that district have asked you to look at this and discuss it with them. You haven't even discussed it with us. You haven't listed it and given your reasons why you're not even going to discuss it. And our points are valid, and they're in the direction of the master plan. And so, we, you know, frankly can't comprehend it. The last time that you were here, or we were here, there was discussion about not being able to regulate religious institutions. There is some documents here put out by the United States Department of Justice. There is a four-page brochure, and there's a letter here that was written to you, the township trustees and the Township Planning Commission. This is just a couple of years old, and it talks about the Religious Institution Act. And one of the questions exactly in that act, and if you want copies of this, I'll be happy to give it to you, because that would mean we'd be working together. Number four, question, United States Department of Justice to the township, does this act exempt religious assemblies and institutions from local zoning laws? The answer is no. It does not. What the act clearly says is you can't discriminate against religious institutions. You can't choose one over another, and you can't treat them differently than you would treat any other public institution, meaning a lodge or anything like that. What we're asking for in our zoning district, which is agricultural district, which is a higher standard than residential, because we have a different use than residential, is to eliminate all institutional uses from it. It's contrary to the master plan, it's contrary to farming, to open space and to the activities that go on there. And so, those types of institutions are detrimental. The state has identified agricultural areas, the township has identified that area as being something we'd want to preserve. And eliminating all institutional uses would accomplish that. It's not discriminatory. There is plenty of other places within the Township of Oxford where institutional uses can go, where churches can go, where religious institutions were going, where Masonic halls can go, where clubhouses can go. Not on one of the 29 owner-occupied places that are agriculturally zoned in Oxford. You've only got a few left. Why squander them? If you want to get rid of the zoning district, have a master plan review, be honest about what you're doing, and let's go that way. But if you're going to have ag on it, treat it like ag. Let us survive. Every time you eliminate one of those properties, it's harder to get a vet, it's harder to get feed, it's harder to go down the road with your farm implements, it's harder to go down the road with your horses. That makes it harder. You're squeezing the life out of that area, and we're asking you to stop. So the amendments that we did are legal, they are binding, they will hold up in court, and I don't understand why you won't consider it. You're doing stuff that's just, who came up with that? So I've got some information to give you here, basically a write-up. Summary of the law. We've also provided you on numerous occasions our application. I emailed the chair again today, the complete mock-up of the zoning, the reasons why. So I'm going to give you this testimony here, I'm going to give you this breakdown and analysis of the religious land use. And I ask that you actually research what you're saying and doing before you do it. And, you know, why don't we work together? You're just going to throw the gravel down and say what you say goes? You're not even close.
Anyone else in the public wishing to speak?
Mr. Chair, Bruce Myers again. This is testimony for the proposed text amendments to the agricultural zoning district. Please include this in the communications for the public record. I do not agree to the township addition of state-licensed residential facilities only in the agricultural zoning district. If the Planning Commission seeks to add this provision to the ordinance, it should be done unilaterally and simultaneously throughout the entire residential zoning district. The ordinance must also address equivalent density to a residential use and require special land use approval for any use that is not equivalent to single-family use. I do not agree with keeping public schools and churches or any other institutional use as permitted, as a permitted use in the country area. It's not in character with the area, it's contrary to the master plan, and it is a conflicting land use when evaluated with the goal of the district as stated in the master plan and ordinance, and is not in character with the district. The district does not have the infrastructure to support any such use, nor do we want to prematurely develop by any, by having to improve the infrastructure to accommodate such use, since the master plan clearly states that these improvements are not planned in the area. Zoning text amendments that are appropriate for the country area have been submitted to the PC Planning Commission by members of the community, and has been ignored by the Planning Commission. These amendments conform to the master plan and update the ordinance to affect the master plan, and I see no valid reason that the Planning Commission has not acted on them. Please adopt the amendments as proposed by the residents of the agricultural zoning district. We request that the- We request that the Planning Commission comply with the Michigan statute by creating a meeting record which accurately summarizes each citizen's statement regarding the proposed amendments. We request that the Planning Commission make a resolution that they are in opposition to any proposed law which seeks to remove the local jurisdiction control regarding zoning regulation of institutional use in a residential area. I don't know if you're aware, but there's action to take that away from you guys. We urge the Planning Commission to amend the ordinance for all residential zoning districts to require special land use approval for any institutional uses in residential and agricultural zoning districts to ensure the following. One, that it requires direct access to paved county primary road. Two, it requires appropriate screening. Three, it requires adequate onsite parking. Four, it limits outdoor activities, noise, and hours of operation to residential standards. Five, it's harmonious in the character with the surrounding neighborhood. Six, puts restrictions on commercial use such as the rental facilities and so forth. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else out in the public wishing to speak? Yep, in back.
So I'm guessing that...oh, it's Jenny Gonsen, 3270. I'm guessing that you guys were told to just push this through tonight. Nobody's making eye contact, and nobody's really listening to it. I see Jack Curtis with his little aggravated grand wanting this out of the way here. The last meeting, you held off the vote so that we had a chance to review the attorney's notes on the ordinance that you have been telling us since last year that the attorneys are reviewing, and you put this off because you said the attorneys are reviewing it. And yet we go to the township and try to get those notes and the review of what the attorney came up with, what his position was, and what was said on all this stuff, and we were informed by Curtis Wright that none of this exists, that lawyers haven't even looked at this stuff, that there are no notes that we can look at. So I'm really wondering about that. You say that you have gone...had ordinance review meetings, and that all this has been talked about and discussed. There's nothing on your website saying when this was held, what was done at any of these meetings. There's nothing posted, no notice given. We have FOIA'd information from the township, trying to get this stuff, and apparently they're saying there is no lawyer review. So I'm wondering how you can run by what the lawyers are supposedly saying if they aren't really even looking at it. I'm wondering who's making these decisions? How is this being discussed? Who's doing this? And I know you don't want to get into any kind of conversation here, but what the heck? We've asked for this stuff to change. The original planner said that, you know, hop was allowed in the neighborhood. Sure, an institution right in our quiet, you know, little residential ag zoning district, no problem. He was the first one to screw up. The guy that was here the last meeting said that we can't exclude schools, and you can't exclude institution...religious institutions, and yet we have proof that yes, in fact, you can. He said, oh, it's all standard stuff, we can't exclude that. Yet that's what we've asked for on the zoning amendments, and you guys are excluding it. I mean, what's the purpose of that? Why would you want us to have more infrastructure, more traffic, more institutionalized businesses in an area this jammed that's supposed to be protected on our master plan? Most of us that live up there have invested heavily. I have just about everything that I am worth into my farm, and I have worked harder to keep that farm, I think, than most of you can imagine over the last 30-some-odd years. And to have something like this move into my neighborhood and destroy my property values and destroy the whole quality of life up there is just sickening. It's just crazy, and you folks are just going along with whatever you've been told, apparently. No one's looking into anything, no one's making any decisions to help. I've talked to other planners and other township boards, and they are absolutely appalled that we've come to our township planning board and have asked for help here, and we're being ignored. I don't understand it. Thanks for listening.
Thank you. Anyone else in the public wishing to speak?
Just a quick note, we've been told for a long time on Catwarkfield, 1220 East Davison Lake Road. Jenny didn't mention, but I'm going to mention, we've been told for a long time that the township planners have been reviewing this, and then recently, as of this week, we were told that they haven't been reviewing this. So we're being told two different things. I just wanted to point that out along with the attorney review, planner review, we were told the planners have not been reviewing it. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else in the public wishing to speak?
Larry Rosener, I live at 1830 Cobblestone Lane, Oxford, Michigan, 48371. And after coming here, the master plan in 2005, and I have supplied copies of this if you have lost yours, but we've talked about it, and it doesn't happen. There's many articles that I've given to this board. You just ignore them. It doesn't seem to, you know, why? Why are you doing what you're doing when we don't have a lot of agriculture, and you're being driven to take and try to do something with it? And there's been articles, I've got a whole file of articles that said this is what the residents are asking for. I guess the board just disregards the residents, because one of the things that come to my mind is that there really is not much representation on the Planning Commission. You know, we have the secretary that, you know, she doesn't live in this township, so things don't...things drop off the minutes, and, you know, we've got, you know, I've got some tapes of what we said, and it just goes away. And it can only go away with each of you agreeing to let it go away. And the residents are not happy. There's not that many of them, but once that's gone, it's gone. The roads are terrible, you know, it's not the right place for it. There's right places for what they're looking, but it seems like...it's like a magnet. It goes out there because the land is cheap. So, you know, I don't know what we have to do to get the board's attention. I really don't. I'm flustered. 2005 on, and I'm...my neighbors have come up. You know, we had a roomful of people. It didn't make any difference. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else in the public?
Cindy Hunez, 1366 East Davison Lake Road, Metamora. I would just like to go on record that I've been coming to these meetings for two years, and I would like to state that not one of you people cares about doing the right thing, is doing the right thing, and you're all doing this illegally.
Thank you. Anyone else in the public wishing to speak? Last one in the back?
Barbara Blannick, I live at 3601 Barber Road in Oxford Township. I was debating whether to speak again tonight. I was looking back over some old notes, and I realized the first time I came to you was in August of 2016. That's over two and a half years ago. It's a long time ago, and since then, I've been here many, many, many times, always with the same plea. In August of 2016, I said that I had heard a rumor, it hadn't yet been substantiated, because Mr. Karnakio hadn't yet met the new owners of 39...what is their address? 3921 Barber. He interviewed the new owners and had a big expose in the Oxford leader explaining what their plans were. So I came to you, and I said, listen, this is a low-density agricultural district, and per the plans of the new owners of 3921, they want to build an institutional campus, and that would be multiple structures with dozens of children, and requiring assistance by a number of people coming in 24/7 to care for these children. And I said to you on many occasions that that doesn't fit our density. We are a low-density area, and this would be now high-density. It would be putting a dagger into our heart to have something so different from the atmosphere in the area that we enjoy. So I don't know what more to tell you. I've been talking to you for two and a half years, and I don't get any response from you, and yet it just seems that these owners are able to forge ahead and put in something that is absolutely counter to the existing situation that we enjoy. You have the...how do I call it? You are the key holders to the master plan, to the zoning and ordinance, and we rely on you to maintain the living conditions and the lifestyle that we have chosen. Just as an aside, in case you don't know this, the Metamora Hunt just celebrated their 90th anniversary. I don't think any of us here today are 90 years old, which means the Metamora Hunt was established before we even came into being. And the reason they're still in existence is because the landowners in the area of the Metamora Hunt, which is the northeast quadrant of Oxford, are aware of the low-density needs in order to have horse-riding in the area. And I do...again, I've said this eight times now to you this evening, but I don't know what more I can say after two and a half years of begging you, begging you to please stop the institutional development that is occurring, because it's putting a dagger into our heart, and it will forever change the Metamora Hunt and our northeast quadrant. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else in the public wishing to speak? Okay, I'm going to close public comment. Let's move on to commissioner discussion.
Mr. Chair?
Yep.
I'd like to make a few comments myself.
No, you can have comment first, then a motion come on board.
Thank you.
Okay? You can have a discussion, we have to clarify.
I think since I've been more involved with it, and from the time I started on the agricultural uses, we did listen to a lot of the first comments, from my point of view, with a joint meeting that the township held here. And then from that, you know, we went into some other areas of comments and concerns, and we received a lot of information from a lot of people. And I think what the ORC group tried to do was look at all the comments. I mean, I have all the documents that I picked and that were handed to me to look at and read, and some of the big concerns, and from the very beginning, were things with, you know, waste composting and a lot of other issues within the ordinance itself. We didn't probably get rid of everything within the ordinance, but we attempted to sit down and eliminate a lot of things that we thought would be good within the ordinance, because they were already permitted uses, and several uses that were permitted under special land uses are such that we didn't feel should even be there at all. So we took out almost a dozen different things within the ag agricultural use districts that we felt could be detrimental. Did we take them all out based on opinions, I guess, from what I understood to be conversation with the planning and zoning administrator, with the attorney, and based on school and church and such within those guidelines? And with the state licensing requirements for child and adult care home facilities and foster care facilities? We tried to enact the language of the law itself to then respond to those issues. So I think what we, in a sense, presented, because we took out, you know, commercial outdoor recreation, we took out golf courses and driving ranges, we took out private airports. We said you could have an airport, but it could be a landing strip or something subject to it. We took out cider mills and livestock auction yards. We took out a lot of different things that we felt were not good for that district. With kennels, you know, we think you should still have some, but in a regulated area. With commercial greenhouses and such, we didn't think those were appropriate out there. Temporary housing for seasonal labor, we eliminated that, and we eliminated the composting, other than based on the fact that we wrote in what would be allowed to do it under the Right to Farm Act, so people could still continue to use their properties as such. Maybe we didn't hit everything on the nail the way everybody wanted it, but we did do quite a job in eliminating a lot of the things with oil and gas extraction, all those things out there that we took out, country clubs included, you know, because we didn't want to see another big facility like that moving out there. Or I didn't, anyway, I'll say it that way. My opinion was, I didn't want to see it moving out there. I drive the roads, I drive up and down the neighborhood within the area that these people are talking about. I'd love to see it stay as pristine as it possibly could. And I think we have moved some of the things in the right direction, maybe we just haven't hit them all in everyone's opinion, but I feel like we're moving in the right direction, and if in the future, you know, we move in another direction to eliminate more or respond to things people want within the community, we try hard to do that based on what we have in front of us.
Okay. Lauren, can you kind of go over how the planner has reviewed this information? You didn't provide an official review, correct?
Correct.
You worked with the ORC?
Correct.
Okay.
So my job as staff planner for the township, of course, and so I rewrote the ordinance. So I didn't provide a specific recommendation, because there were multiple meetings over the course of seven months, I believe, that we discussed this in the ORC, that during the two public hearings, during the multiple public input, public comments that were provided, I took notes, we went over that information in the ORC meetings, we had lively discussions about these things, listening to the residents and incorporating their ideas, reading and reviewing the documents that they submitted to us. And it...as staff planner, I was tasked with writing the ordinance and eliminating the items as I was advised to do by the ORC. So what...I think what Tom was saying is somewhere between 14 and 16 items, more intense or commercial items were removed in an effort to protect the area and the district more. We did adhere to the state act which supersedes township, the township ordinance, that we don't have the power to regulate more strictly on the foster care and group homes, and the same as well with churches. So that was not eliminated. Hope that helps. Anything else?
Any other comment? From the commissioners? Yeah, go ahead.
I sit on the ORC as well, and one of the things that I...a couple of things. I've talked to a number of you people that have personally, and I've fallen on my sword a few times from some of the comments that were brought up about specific areas out there. And one of the things that we did is we bumped the master plan against the ordinance, the agricultural district. And one of the lively conversations we had in regards to that was the greenhouses. The greenhouses are specifically a line item in the master plan, so those are the things that we looked at to make sure that we had correlation between the master plan and our zoning ordinance, and I just wanted to point that out as well.
Any other discussion? Any other discussion?
Based upon the draft zoning ordinance text amendments, as heard at the February 28, 2019 Planning Commission meeting and reflected in the minutes of this meeting, the planner's memo dated February 19, 2019, and the attorney's memo dated 12/26/2018, I move that the Planning Commission recommend to the township board approval of the following zoning ordinance text amendments as presented concerning the agricultural district's schedule of uses. Section 2.2 definitions, section 3.5 schedule of use regulations ag agricultural, and Article 5 use regulations. End of motion.
Can you tell us what those are, please? What those numbers are?
We'll have a second.
I'll second.
Can you define those, please? With public?
We're handling a piece of business right here at the moment, it's not open for public comment.
I'm asking for comment, I'm asking you to reading off amendment numbers, and we don't know what they are, they're not on the board. Clear for me, please? What do those numbers are?
Do we have discussion on the motion?
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
Just one thing I'd like to add to the amendment, just to be consistent throughout the ordinance, it's section two of the ag section, just says special uses and not special land uses. Every other section says special land uses. You put the word land in there?
You want it here?
Yep. Just to be consistent.
Yeah.
This is the word? Yes, just the word.
Paraphrase, word?
That can be changed, correct?
What?
Just including the land in section two? The word land?
Can be added, yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, can be added.
Is there any other discussion on the motion? Seeing none, like a roll call vote? Commissioner Berger?
Yes.
Commissioner Curtis?
Yes.
Commissioner Noff?
Yes.
Commissioner Nold?
Yes.
Commissioner Spiz?
Yes.
Commissioner Hunwick, yes. Commissioner Young?
Yes.
Motion passes. Move on to item number 10. Move business. I have received and filed for distribution to the township board the Planning Commission meeting log from 2018. Please note that.
I'll move the receiving file.
Second. Then moved and seconded, any discussion? Seeing none? Those in favor? Aye. Those opposed? That motion passes. Item 11, communications or committee reports, Economic Development Committee?
We have not had a meeting.
Ordinance Review Committee?
We have met, obviously you know that because we've been talking about some of it this evening already. We have tried to set an agenda to move forward with some other items of interest within the township. And some of the things that we don't have in place and we need some kind of language to start regulating some of it is outside dining and another one is mobile food and vending food trucks. There's been many now that have been utilized throughout the township without any way, shape, or form of anybody knowing about it. And we're concerned about having some way to regulate those uses. The sign ordinance is actually in that stipulation of what we want to work towards next, and also we want to work in the, into the PUD ordinance to bring things into perspective there. So we still have other items of mixed-use zoning and two tiers of multifamily zoning in all the different areas, but we're only taking them one step at a time. So just to let you know, we have, we are working from a schedule that was given to us basically through the township board.
Right.
So I just like to point that out, that sometimes these aren't necessarily the direction we have as a priority within our own mindset, it's coming from another direction. So that's where we're at, and that's where we're moving forward.
Now, we worked on the uses for the ag district first because there was some public protest for that.
Well, that, well, basically.
But is that, are you guys tracking that as well? Because we're going to go into the other districts, correct?
That got brought up, that got brought up basically from the, in large concern from the fall meeting of last year with the joint session we had. And then we moved into that direction on purpose to try and help resolve some of those concerns. And we literally have looked at a lot of things within those districts now, in the ag district, to try and do what we did for this evening, and we think we're moving in a good direction. Like I said, we haven't hit all the nails on the head, and maybe there's room to still investigate and do more work in that area. I'm not going to say that I won't look into it, but right now we have, some are coming upon us with some other things that we need to get working with also, that we've had direction given to us so that we have to move in that mode too, so.
Yeah, I just want to make sure we're, we're going to give that list up again for prior to this nation and that sort of thing. But I just want to make sure you're still tracking that we need to go through the other districts and check their uses. Do you know what I'm saying?
Well, I understand what you're saying. It's called, it's called zoning criteria, but we, is it number one, number two, or number three? If that's what you're saying, we're going based on what was somewhat given to us in a form of how they wanted things done.
Yep.
And that direction didn't come necessarily from the ORC.
Yep.
That came from the township board. So I just want you to know that.
Anything else?
Not really.
Mr. Chair?
Until we meet again.
I do have a question.
Yep.
Relative to the Ordinance Review Subcommittee. We just approved the ag section, but there's a lot of other things on the action or to-do list, and maybe Trustee Curtis might jump in here a little bit too. Is there a strategy from the township board? Are we going to do these at one time? Are we going to do them piecemeal every time we approve something, it goes to board and they approve it?
For each district?
Yeah, and what's the long-term strategy? Are we waiting to release the ag as part of the new ordinance, or are we going to update as we go?
I don't understand the question. We've recommended to township board that we adopt these, we'll adopt them if we get a vote.
Okay, so as everything gets recommended from the PC, the board will take action at that point, so we could adjust Board 57A three or four times a year?
We don't change it 100 times a year.
Okay, that's what I wanted to ask.
If they have the money to do it, right.
Okay, CBA? Excuse me?
There have been no meetings yet this year, to best of my knowledge.
Okay, moving to item 12, planner and engineer report. The engineer's not here, is there anything? Come on, war.
We, as I was telling people today, many of you, I told, we have reached development season, and there is a lot of activity. Homes, decks, garages, accessory structures, so a whole other, another life breathed into the township hall, yes.
So we expect to give this?
Lots of activity. Yep, yep.
Okay, good. All right, with that brings us to item 13, which is adjournment. Close the meeting at 7:59 PM.